All right, good morning and welcome to our July 31 Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Davis will be open with the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Smith will be open in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come and do the business for the county. We ask that you would help us to make the right decisions, go the way that you would have us to go, and go the way that would be the best benefit for the citizens of our community. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, and welcome, welcome, and welcome Merritt Smith.
Yeah.
Congratulations on the appointment process. I know it was a very transparent and well worked process through the Republican Party and Chairman Kraft handling that. But welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
We'll jump right in. We'll try not to make it too hard on you today, and eventually we will get you a name tag so people know who you are. But in the meantime.
Don't know that that's a good thing or a bad thing.
It comes with the territory. So with that, I'm going to jump right into approving the meeting minutes of July 24.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of 24.
And I'm going to vacate the chair at a second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
I abstain because I wasn't here.
In the matter of appointing a vice chairman for the Board of Sota County Commissioners.
Of course, we all know the laws we dealt with with Commissioner Coleman, and she was our vice chair over the past year, so we now need to appoint a new vice chair. Merritt, I know that you're getting your sea legs, so I think we probably both agree that Commissioner Davis, if you're willing to jump in vice chair, that probably makes the most sense. And then as you get your sea legs down, we'll figure out the reorg come January. Is there any thoughts there?
I would accept if you so choose.
All right, I will, I'll make the motion to appoint Commissioner Brian Davis as the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
I abstain.
All right, it's an old move.
In the matter.
You won.
In the matter of memorandum of understanding between the Sota County Board of Commissioners and Sota County Engineer and City of Portsmouth for work performed by county employees and county equipment.
All right, this is an MOU. We do multiple of these every year. Commissioner Smith, that the county engineer does a great job partnering with our many local townships and city just recently, over the past three, four years now, where they will partner when possible to use county equipment or employees to work on some joint projects. So this is the MOU that spells that out. Any comments or questions?
I do have some understanding of that from being on the village council at South Webster. We worked with the engineer on that, so.
Fantastic. There's nothing else? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
And I'm going to need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Any comments or questions on item number four? Here you go.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds regarding sanitary engineer.
Going forward, you'll notice that anytime we have appropriations connected to the county, the sanitary engineer transfers are connected to the sanitary engineer, anything within that office, we will have it as a separate line item due to potential conflict of interest, not because of Mr. Smith, but he has some family that works down there, so now just to be cautious, we'll separate these things out so you can abstain anytime we're considering that specific department.
Thank you for that.
Any additional comments or questions on the appropriation request for the sanitary engineer? Here you go.
Motion to approve.
I'll vacate the chair a second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
I will abstain.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Any comments or questions on the transfer of funds? Here you go.
I make motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers.
Any comments, questions on item seven? Here you go.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for various funds, moral obligations, and then annulled certificates in the total amount of $1,125,105.77.
Do we have any comments or questions on item eight?
I would say one comment on that is when about almost a quarter of that amount was another payout on the Marx Tower that went out to Tri-County. So, and just to give everybody an update on that, which we are, we are almost on schedule. We're almost there. We're getting, we're getting real close. We continue to have a lot of rain issues like that, but that is a big portion of that. The Marx Tower project is nearing its completion, so we're pretty excited about getting that done and hopefully getting that turned on here before long. Definitely going to happen in the third quarter of this year, so we're excited.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Smith, typically we don't see a million plus dollar docket, so a lot of times that's linked to very large grant projects or anything connected to our county engineer.
There was also quite a bit in there for job well, engineer and job family services.
Okay.
And those aren't necessarily general fund related transactions. Those are from other avenues of money, so, yeah.
I do understand the Marx Tower having been an EMT and a firefighter. I understand that from, and the need for that, so.
All right. Any additional comments, questions? Here you go.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award facility remodeling of the exterior of 601 Eighth Street regarding ASC.
So this is for ASC remodel. I think we had one response for the bid on that project. It is Roger Hemming LLC. The total bid amount is $49,500. This is specifically for the exterior. So they'll be doing some paintings and some different enhancements in the outside. Any additional comments or questions?
I think, I think the idea of covering up a lot of the wood with siding is very, that's good. That's going to last, help it last a lot longer. And I'm really glad to see this done because this building, it has years on it. It really does. It's turning that up, and this, this is really going to help with the, just the look of this government building and the employees, you know, pride. It's where I work, so it looks nice, and they deserve it. They work hard over there. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
And I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the quote replacing two train system compressors regarding the sheriff, Sota County Sheriff.
Okay, over at the sheriff's office, we've been having some issues with the AC that services all the offices and the jail. This is to fix two compressors, two train system compressors. The amount is $132,900. It is through the GSA federal supply schedule, so this project can proceed without a formal bidding process because when it goes through the GSA federal supply, those have already been bid to the lowest prices, and so we're being requested to help them out over there and keep everybody cool. Any comments or questions?
I appreciate the maintenance staff over there keeping it alive as long as they have. The building is 21 years old, and when you get to that point, your infrastructure, and I think Commissioner Smith would agree on this one, having experience in this as well, those units have had their guts ran out of them for years, and to last as long as they have, we've now reached the end of their life, and we also have a chiller unit that probably is going to need attention here soon, and that's something else we've been looking into, but this is definitely, you know, very necessary to make sure that the AC back continues to work in that building. We, it just doesn't have to do with the jail. It has to do with the menstruation and everything else that goes on that facility, so got to get it up.
Having done maintenance for the past 10 years and being over maintenance, I spent a number of time trying to keep air conditioners going, you know, trying to keep those, because you don't want to pay for that, but they've got a lifespan, and then usually you can add a few more years with a little bit of maintenance, but eventually they, just like us, they die, and we need to, we need to replace them. So I, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the money for the air conditioners.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for the use of opioid settlement funds for the provision of primary prevention services in Sota County, Ohio regarding impact prevention.
So we do receive some opioid settlement funds of the settlements that we have opted into. They are very limited on what we can or can't use them for according to the judge orders. A lot of it is prevention abatement strategies. One group that we first started funding through ARPA funds was impact prevention. They are a nonprofit. I think initially they were in maybe three school districts before we started helping fund. They are now in all school districts, but I believe Clay, I think that's correct.
They did actually do something there.
They've done something there, but I don't know that they're as, as involved there, which, you know, that's ultimately up to the administration. But this, they do peer-led prevention. They, they have events throughout the community, and it's all peer-led, so they'll talk about not using drugs, but they also talk about bullying. They also talk about positive imagery. They also have vaping, you know, and the kids are just so impressive. They come in at least once a year and present to us different projects they do in the schools, and they're truly focusing on the issues within their own school district. So it's interesting to hear from school to school what they think needs to happen most, and it's heartbreaking to hear some of the stories they share when they're putting suicide prevention hotline numbers on the back of, back room of stall doors, but at the same time, it's encouraging to see these young leaders step up and care so deeply for their peers and the younger students that go into some of the middle schools and elementary to be positive role models as well. So it's $150,000. It is eligible under the opioid settlement funds. They do a fantastic job in the community and have been making a positive impact. No pun intended, positive impact in our school districts and within our county. And Commissioner Davis, I think you've said it time and time again, prevention is much cheaper than correction, and, and so we got to start now with the kids in school to hopefully stop the next generation from potentially the impacts of substance use. Any comments, questions?
I would add, you know, impact can only do what they can do with funding, and they, they have expanded the program so much here in Sota County. And, um, they, they have expanded the program so much here in Souda County, and they've done it with the same amount of funding. Um, and they're trying to do it in other counties too, and their funding is being squeezed. Um, depending on our opioid settlement monies, you know, we have a schedule of dollars that come in from the settlements every year. Um, we're committed, this, this covers this next year, of course, um, and we're committed to that. But, uh, I, I think we need to be open to look at possibly, and I know they also got some reaching nine dollars to One Ohio, but...
That was specific to serve, start serving other communities.
Yeah, yeah. We, 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 uh, need to watch that. There's only so much we can use these dollars for. Um, and prevention is one of those things. Uh, so I, I think we need to be receptive to if they, if they find where the schools are opening up even more, and there's a need for more funding to do more programming, to do more prevention in our local schools, then we should be open to look at that and determine whether or not we can use these dollars for that. I, uh, the testimonials I've heard, uh, and what they're doing in the schools, even from my, my own kids, you know, my, my own kids from high school, they, they see it. They see the evidence. And, uh, and then talking to some teachers and administrators, they're, we're, we're starting to get some evidence-based, um, you know, testimonials that just tell us that this, this is working, so it's peer, peer, um, led in schools, which I think is a big part of it. I really do. Uh, so anyways, just, just wanted to bring that up and, and mention that, that perhaps, uh, you know, we can maybe do more in the future. I don't wanna commit to anything, especially with our funding issues elsewhere, but, uh, just wanted to bring that up. And with that, I'd make a motion to adopt the, the prevention resolution.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the budget commission.
Any comments or questions on the amended certificate? Hearing none?
If not, I'll make a motion to accept. I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of emergency resul- resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding and consistent with the terms of the governmental entity of, and shareholder direct settlement agreement with Purdue Pharma.
Long time delay.
Yep, so, uh, you know, the Purdue Pharma, um, piece of the opioid lawsuits has kind of been held up due to, um, bankruptcy trial courts and, you know, people much higher in the system than us, but, uh, this is our consideration to opt into the settlement, uh, through the One Ohio, uh, settlement agreement, uh, specific to Purdue Pharma. Any comments or questions?
I, I would add that this has nothing to do with the three distributor lawsuits that continue on the litigation that the county is still involved in, uh, but this is one that's been, as Commissioner Powell mentioned, it's been floating out there for a long time. Had to go through a lot of legal wranglings, and, uh, we're almost there. And, uh, don't know exactly what that means as far as the, uh, One Ohio dollars, the value of that. Uh, I think that has yet to be determined, um, but there's a formula, but, um, Purdue definitely preyed upon the citizens of Souda County. And, uh, this is one way that we'll be able to assist in, in, uh, getting, uh, some of those dollars recouped to where we can do prevention. There it is. I mean, that, that's where those dollars will go, to a prevention and other, other measures, so just wanted to mention that. Appreciate our, uh, legal counsel on continuing to do this work.
If there's no other comments or questions, entertain a motion?
Um, I'd make a motion to adopt.
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Yeah.
You want to, you can.
Nah, you can have it.
It's all good.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for use of opioid settlement funds for the payment of certain costs associated with the Southern Ohio Drug Task, Task Force and the Organized and Major Crimes Task Force.
Sounds like we have an opioid-heavy agenda today. Uh, this is specific to some opioid settlement funds as well. Once again, uh, these, these funds are limited in scope, and I appreciate, um, Maggie Miller in the prosecutor's office, uh, as she works through the, the judge's order, uh, you, you've already heard how we're trying to help prevent, um, kids from falling victim to substance use disorder, but at the same time, we need to prevent, um, drugs from circulating through our community as well. This, these funds can go and help, um, offset the sheriff's budget, um, to help continue to pay for the drug task force. Um, appreciate their hard work. I know they do a lot of stuff behind the scenes and, and tackling, um, distributors and people that continue to prey on our community, so, uh, it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars, um, at this time out of these funds. Any comments, questions?
If anybody doubts if there's not an effort by county government to tackle and, and, uh, in many ways attack the opioid epidemic in our county, this is a prime example. About the same time as the Major Crimes Task Force has agreed to with the sheriff and the attorney general's office, uh, we also started our, our special victims unit, uh, through our prosecutor's office. Our prosecutors started that. And, uh, this is just another example that where this funding will help fund the, the costs to operate those, those, uh, departments. So, just wanted to bring that up and, and draw that out so people understand where, we're trying to prevent the use of general fund dollars so much on, on these things, so, anyways, that's it.
Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none?
Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Uh, I am gonna add an item fifteen. Our, um, maintenance director asked us to, uh, consider this. He's been working with a group called the Perfection Group, um, to evaluate the energy efficiency of the courthouse. Um, they do need a letter of authorization for us to be able to release our AEP bills to them so they can kind of get a better feel for how much money we're spending, um, in electric, and, and then to do some calculations to figure out how they may be able to help us. So this is just an authorization to release our AEP. Quite frankly, it's probably a pro- public record anyway, but this kind of speeds up the process. Uh, any comments, questions? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to, to, uh, sign?
Authorize?
Authorized, yeah, uh.
We're, we're approving them.
Yes. You're signing it, Doctor.
I see, right, okay.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And that is the end of our agenda. Um, you survived so far, Mr. Smith?
So far.
That's good. Um, off to questions of items on agenda. At this time, we're opening up to anybody in the room that may have any questions, items on agenda. Mr. Bill Shug, welcome.
How you guys doing?
It's actually the little black microphone in the middle, but I do like to see people pull that up.
I'm used to it. I got a black one in my face all day.
You can't talk with this, it's a box.
My wife wishes. Uh, before I get started, Merrick, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, first off, on item number three, talking about, um, the agreement with, you know, county employees using county equipment, you know, with the city and everything else, are there any limitations on the type of equipment that the county can loan out to the city? And is it reciprocal?
Uh, is it reciprocal? I'd have to go through the MOU. So, i- it is for our engineer to use our employees and our, our equipment on Souda County property, or city property. So, for example, I know we helped with, uh, Telepathy Street. Uh, that was more on the paving project. Uh, there's a road, home, Commissioner Davis, there's a road that goes from city to county to township, um, that they were working on jointly to, to fix a bridge, but at the same time fix the road.
Shear's Hollow.
Shear's Hollow. Um, so it, it's, it's those types of partnerships that we're seeing, um, between the two entities. Engineer LeBron gets better a little more, but, um, it, it's, it's utilizing our resources to help offset their costs, essentially.
Okay, thank you very much. And it's kind of a, a combo on items eleven and thirteen. Uh, could any of the commissioners explain the difference in the revenue source, uh, or are they the same when it comes to the opioid settlement funds as they pertain to eleven and thirteen?
So, it is the same settlement dollars. Um, it's, it's a pocket of money that some, some of the settlements had an upfront, um, sum of money that they paid out, and then it's carried out in sums, carried out over eighteen years. Some's carried out in shorter terms, depending on the company, uh, but it is the same bucket of, of money that is very limited to the judge's order tied to the settlement. Um, so abatement prevention, uh, are, are the main drivers for that. Um, so that's why we always make sure we run by our legal counsel to make sure that we are, um, staying in line with the judge's order for those funds. Uh, they, these are One Ohio dollars. Uh, the One Ohio fund comes in three different ways. Um, direct allocation through political subdivisions, so we get our share. City of Portsmouth, we get a share as well. Um, the regions, so, uh, for the last three or four years, I was the Region Nine president, and that money comes into a region. Um, our Region Nine covers eight counties. Um, I've since vacated that chair, and I'm now on the One Ohio Foundation Board for the state. Uh, that board determines, uh, can do larger projects, but they do get some funding. We also determine how much grant funding dollars hit the regions from year to year. Um, so it, it's kind of three-fold. There's three different buckets of opioid money, direct allocation, regional, and statewide. But in terms of these two projects, they're coming out of the same line.
So it's a simple process?
Uh, sure. I mean, for us, it is.
We have one bucket here.
There you go.
We created a fund, and it was, when the monies come in, it goes into that one fund, and then we allocate from out of that fund. So that's what we did today in two separate instances, uh, so that...
The, the more difficult process is at the region level. Um, some regions are literally one county because of their population base. We have eight. Um, each county gets three representatives. Um, I think we had two point, I'm going by memory, so I could be off, two point eight million to allocate in the last round. Um, we had over or close to fifty million in requests. Um, so there, there's a whole grant, um, process. There's a, a system that we would go through and evaluate. They did training for anybody interested in, um, submitting a grant through that process. I can tell our Region Nine focused on the first round specifically on prevention in most places. Uh, unlike what we have done here in Souda County, and we kept using Souda County as the example specifically to our region, uh, some counties had no prevention at all in, in their school systems, no prevention for families, no prevention for kids. Um, so, uh, Impact was actually able to get some funding to start in a couple other counties, and then they, there were similar, um, similar organizations in, in Fayette, out in Adams, Brown, um, up in, uh, Ross, that, that got similar funding to do similar activities, to start prevention within the schools because there was nothing. And they were kind of surprised really how much we had here. Um, something they'd wanted to do, but, so Region Nine focused exclusively on prevention. There was a couple outlier projects, um, and we'll see how that board, um, carries out the next round of grants, which will probably be opening up, um, within the year. Um, the, the board at the state level has allocated some additional funding, and they have to reopen the grant cycle and the grant process, and there'll be training available for nonprofits. I will also say that our region, anybody that was a for-profit entity, we cut out of the equation because if you give grant money to a for-profit, guess what? They get to pay taxes on it. So we wanted our money going further, uh, so we make sure it hit the nonprofits or governmental entities. Um, so we were able to kind of whittle it down first there, and then we started looking at, um, prevention. It's, but all the regions are tackling it drastically different. The, the local regions, all they're doing is making a recommendation. So they go through all the grants, they make a recommendation up to the state level. There's experts at the state level, um, to make sure that once again it fits in the scope of the judge's order. So they're, they're the double check, and then they're working with grantees to then distribute funds.
Thank you very much. Well, and off the agenda, is it okay to ask one off?
Well, it depends if there's anybody on. You're going, you're going, okay. Anything on agenda? Nothing? Okay, off agenda, Bill Shug.
Okay, it's been a while since I've asked about it, but has there been any movement, you know, or progress made towards the reactivation of the Souda County Economic Development Office?
That's a great question, um, and I think now that, uh, Commissioner Smith is in place, it's something hopefully we can figure out shortly. Um, one thing that we do need to tackle, so, uh, hopefully more to come on that bill, but at this point, we're kind of where we've been.
Okay, you always gave detailed answers before, and that's, that's why I was just asking.
Yeah, and, and that's not to say that economic development is not moving. I've been in a lot of meetings. Mr. Davis, I'm sure you've been in meetings. I know, uh, the SOPA board has had multiple meetings with folks interested still, um, out at the airport. I mean, I'm, I'm having developers reach out to me, asking about available land, so it's not that nothing is happening. There's, there's actually quite a, a lot of exciting stuff happening. We just don't have a singular point of contact. So we're kind of all pitching in at this point to make sure that we're not dropping any opportunities along the way.
And for whatever it's worth, I'd like to make a comment. Um, my granddaughter, her school is involved in the IMPACT program. Uh, you know, is one of the team members. She says it's very effective, and she's proud of it.
Awesome.
So that's a good thing. And also wanted to commend, uh, the president of the board, there for the Southern Ohio Ford Authority. He's done a great job of alerting the media about when they're gonna have their meetings and locations and times and everything else. So, done a very good job with it. That's it.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Uh, items not on agenda? Nothing? Nothing today? Anything online?
Yes, from Sid Mackley, Souda Daily News. She says, "Congratulations to the new commissioner. What are the, your top three priorities going into this new office? And what do you hope you'll be able to bring to the table from your life experience?"
How much time do we have?
As, as long as you want. This is, this is your meeting, sir.
The, the, my top three priorities would, would be kind of tough right now because I don't really, um, my feet's not on the ground. I mean, I walk in here, and my top priority would be to acclimate myself with the things that are going on and finding out what's happening. Uh, economic development obviously would be one of those things, and, um, outside of that, I, I have to look at everything else before I can make that determination. I, when, when I was selected by the committee to be here, I told them I would not make promises to anyone as to what, what I intended to do in here because there's three members on this board, and I'm only one vote, so I can't, I can't make that decision by myself. And what I will promise, and I promised at the meeting, is I will always try to do the right thing. May not always make that to that point because sometimes I'm human and I make mistakes, but I will always try to do the right thing for the citizens of Souda County. Um, the, my life experiences, that's the one that could take a long time, okay? Cause I, I've, I've done a lot of things in my lifetime. I, I'm six, will be sixty-seven years old in a week or so. And, um, I have, I've worked in management for retail organizations. I worked as a chief probation officer at juvenile court. I worked as the director of the, um, attendance program for the Souda County, uh, or for the South Central Ohio Educational Service Center. I then retired and went back to work and worked ten years as head of maintenance for that organization, and have pastored churches for the past forty years, have run as a firefighter and EMT for the past forty years. So there's, there's a lot of life experiences there that I can draw from, and already, just talking today, talking about the Marx Tower, I understand that need because there are dead spots in the county that, that we don't have, um, access to when we're trying to talk on the radio. So I understand that, and I understand the, um, the need for the air conditioning at the, the sheriff's department because I worked on those things for, for ten years, trying to keep them up and going. So my life experiences will bring a lot of things in. I've worked in the courthouse for twelve years. I worked in administration as the chief probation officer at juvenile court. So I understand how the, somewhat how the budgeting system works in the county, and, and if, if you've ever been around it, government accounting is a whole lot different from any other accounting in the world. And if you don't have a little bit of understanding about how it works, then, then, you know, you, you don't understand it. So I have just, just enough there to be dangerous, so we'll, we'll see what happens from there, but I hope that answers the question.
Commissioner Smith, I just asked that you don't promise to do anything with roads, uh, cause we don't need roads.
I, just this morning.
I'm sure you got hit on a question.
I stopped at a, a local place, and, and on my way in, and someone said, "Well, what are you gonna do with the roads?" I said, "Talk to Darren LeBrone."
Absolutely not.
That's great. That, that's a great person to talk to. Yeah, with that, a, a lot of people don't, gosh, we, we do this all the time, but it's, I hate to even delve, but we, we got an opportunity. Um, Commissioner Smith, you nailed it on the head. If it's a county road, it's Darren LeBrone. If it's a township road, see your township trustees. Um, if it's a city street, see your city councilman or the city manager, and they'll work with the, the manager of the facility or roads to get... And they'll work with the, the manager of the facility or roads to get the engineer to get that done. If it's a state highway, your best bet is to contact the Ohio Department of Transportation. And that is, those are the people who, those monies are funneled to them to do that work. And they have a tough task. They really do. It's a hard thing. If you're in a village, talk to your village councilman, right? You, you, you're aware of that. But they all work together. We, we heard it today. I mean, people are working together to try to get this done and stretch the tax dollars as much as we can to cover as much as, as we can. But we don't, we don't have jurisdiction. We don't do roads. We're gonna get shirts.
We're gonna sign. I'm just gonna wear a sign up here.
We give it for the fair and we don't do roads. And, but we, we do pass along concerns. We do that. If somebody comes to us and says, "Well, this road's terrible." Blanket, blanket statements really are hard for us to qualify and quantify. "The roads are terrible." "Not all of them are. Which ones?" Yeah, there's a bunch that are bad. But if you, if you specify, we don't care at all to share that information with the appropriate parties and say, "Hey, you know, what's going on with this or what's going on with that." So just some advice to everybody and it, it's a learning curve for everybody because everybody thinks that everything's under the commissioners. And it is not that at all.
It'll be your favorite question.
Roads and dogs.
Funny you should say that because I have three comments that says, "Fix the roads in Soudaville."
Fix the roads, well, that'd be the city project.
I agree. They are doing a major infrastructure project in Soudaville right now. Bill Shoah lives nearby and he can testify to that. Getting to work is getting harder now.
They installed a zip line for us.
Yeah, I'm thinking parachutes. We're, we're, it, look, it, it, I know, I'm talking with city manager Sutherland that they are hoping to start paving soon on parts of it that's already been completed. But right now, it does very much look like a war zone. It really does. And, and the detours are, I encourage everyone to slow down, especially the one they have set up right now. Or just go around, folks. Go over, go over Highland Bend, go over Bonza Run, do something. It, it, right now, it's...
It's tough. They've been offed off the one clear area right before you get to Souda Shoe Mart. So now you do have to go up over Bonza if you're coming from that direction.
Yes, sir. The, the pain will be worth the progress. Everybody needs to understand that because what they're doing is they're replacing hundred-year-old infrastructure. And it's old. It's really bad. And they got the money, the grant money, the millions and millions to get this done. There is no good time to do it. There isn't. So I agree. Eventually, it'll all be paved and we'll be back to normal. But it's probably, and maybe the news knows more of this than I do, it's probably a year before they complete that project.
In the day you ask.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna leave it at that. But, but yeah, thanks for the question or the statement. And, and they are, they're going to do their best. It's just, it's, it's bad. We just need everyone, please be patient. It is a city project, okay? Okay, but it's a major. It is a major project. So thank you.
I have one last question from Robbie McKinney. He said, "Do you guys know anything about the flood wall, the stage that they're supposed to be building for the music for River Days on the River?"
I think we, so once again, that is through the Appalachian Development Dollars. It was five hundred million. Local was thirty, I'd say thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-four million. That project is being administered by the Lawrence County Community Action. They were the lead grant writer for, not just Souda County, not just Lawrence County, but there was multiple, multiple projects that fed into the Wonderful Riverfront. Is that the project that the governor phrased? The Wonderful Riverfront Project, which is multiple river fronts up and down the Ohio River. It's, it's moving along as far as we know. They're going through permitting, like they're working with the Army Corps. And the goal was to get all of the permits for all of the projects at the same time versus kind of permit as it goes. That project still, unless there's some sort of date that gets pushed out by the federal government, this is connected to ARPA funds and they have to be completed by end of twenty-six. So they're, they're gonna be moving dirt. They're gonna be pouring concrete. They just gotta get it done. But it is completely administered by Lawrence County Community Action in partnership with the city, of course. But that money will flow through them. They'll pay the bills. They'll get the contractors. They'll manage the, the project.
Oftentimes, with any project like that, especially this one, engineering and bidding and all of that will take more time than actually building a project out itself. And in this case, engineering is major. Everyone needs to remember is when the monies were awarded, thirty-four million was awarded, that's all well and good. But that just, what that, what that did was unleash the, the whole process. And I've heard, I've seen some comments on social media about where did the thirty-four million dollars go? What's going on? Why isn't this happening? Why isn't that happening? Please be patient. It's just like what they're doing up in Soudaville. It takes time. And it is going to happen. It's just when is the question. And Army Corps of Engineers, it's a tough, tough thing to do when you're dealing with the federal government. And, and in this case, if it was just one series of permits to get passed, if it was just the Port of Riverfront, that wouldn't be as big a deal. But we're talking about multiple communities that they want done all at once. They want everything done before they'll let anything out. I, I can't even imagine navigating that. And kudos to them up there for doing it because it's, it's, it's gotta be a huge project. So, thank you.
Thanks for that question. All right. No other questions? Nothing, nothing? At this time, we do entertain closing comments. Mr. Davis, I'll start.
Yeah, first of all, I want to congratulate Commissioner Smith to his new seat on, on the county board. I will ask this question. I'm old enough to remember, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. The show, the movie, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. So I can't wait for, for Mr. Smith to go to DC for whatever, whatever physical capacity so we can say Mr. Smith has gone to Washington. So yes, congratulations. Secondly, I wanted to mention the party in the park at Kendall Heights that happened the other day. I, I really wanted to thank, well, Impact, this is another great example. Impact, of course, was Earl Thomas Colley Park a couple weeks ago. Now they were at Kendall Heights. They, they were at the community center. They had all the, the kids in and, and, and they had all the games there. But also want to thank city manager Sutherland for coordinating the fire EMS and the Port of Police for having a presence there. And they had their cruisers and the fire trucks and all the kids got to, you know, interact with the personnel. And it was great. It was wonderful. So thank Party in the Park and Impact Prevention for doing that. And also wanted to mention, and Commissioner Powell, you're very knowledgeable on this, but wanted to thank Congressman Taylor, David Taylor, for his efforts in DC on behalf of the Interstate seventy-three, seventy-four. You know, the initiative there. There has been a lot of work. I, I think the voices are getting louder. And I think that's why, it wasn't just a few. It's been several now. Local, state, federal, pushing, everyone pushing in the same direction to get this thing done. And now there has been a bill presented in Congress for the build-out of that. And, and it's gonna be huge. If we can open up Southern Ohio to interstate, this would be twenty-three, thirty-two branch going out and opening up the entire Southern Ohio to interstate. Guys, this is huge for commerce and for development. So I wanted to thank him for doing this, getting it out there, the, the efforts at the state level that's been done, local level, engineer LeBrone, ourselves, people just, you know, Representative Pezuli, Johnson. Everybody's pushing in the same direction. And that's why we're getting that feedback. And I, and I hope that Secretary Perdue in Washington, Transportation Secretary Perdue will push this. Duffy, I'm sorry Duffy, Secretary Duffy, and that they'll push this because we have to build great things in America again. It is time to start building great things. We can't just call ourselves a great country unless we're doing great things. And hopefully this will happen. And there will be a huge, huge retirement investment, I believe, if, if this can be done. So I wanted to mention that. And then also, please, everyone, continue to pray for the Coleman family at this time. When the cards stop, the phone calls stop, the flowers stop, a lot of times you're left with your own thoughts and, and, and the mourning process. Don't, don't let them not, and I, I know people won't because I know the people that surround this family. But continue to pray for them because this is hard. This is hard. Pray for us. Pray for, pray for all of our friends and coworkers and acquaintances and, and just continue to lift them up to the Lord, everyone to the Lord. Because it's, it's, it's a tough thing, losing a friend, someone the caliber of Commissioner Coleman Cathy. And just continue to pray for them because this is, this is hard. This is when it really, it gets hard. So I just wanted to bring that up to everybody. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Smith, any comments?
My first opportunity. First of all, I'd like to thank God for allowing me to be in this position. And I'd like to thank the, the committee that voted to put me here. And I would like to say to the people of Souda County that I'm not here to replace Cathy. Cathy was a great person. Cathy was beloved by the staff here. She was beloved by the county. She was beloved. And there's no way you could ever replace that. And Cathy was a friend of mine. And so, you know, when you, you have someone like that that you lose, it's, it's a hurt and a pain for the whole county, for everyone, especially as Brian mentioned, the, the family. It's, it's just a hard thing. And, and I want to say to her family that I hope that I can at least be part of the things that she was working on, the things that she was doing, and hope that I can bring something to them to help them with their grief and their loss that they've had with the loss of Cathy. And also the staff here. The staff has been great to me coming in here. You know, everyone has been great to me, trying to get me, you know, on my feet and get me running, get me going to where that, that I need to be. But they also miss Cathy. And they miss her being in here and the things that she did and the things that, that she always took care of for them. And so mostly, I want to say, I'm not trying to take her place. I'm just here to fill a role. And hopefully that we can, as the things that we do, that we can continue to build her memories through the things that, that we do here in this office. And I'd like to thank the, the, all the people in Souda County for the great, you know, on Facebook, I've got all kinds of, hey, congratulations, thanks, hope things go well. And I know that won't continue that way. There will be, there will be things that, that we will, that I will not do that will be pleasing to everyone out there. But I want to thank them for that. And, and I just hope that I can continue to, as I said, do the right thing for the people of Souda County. And as I find out more about the things that are going on, be a part of the things that, that we need to do to make things work here in the county.
All right. Well said. Thank you, sir. The only thing that I have to say, once again, welcome, congratulations. You did it. You got through the first one. Well done. We're excited to have you, Merritt. And we, we expect big things from you. And I know your heart's in the right place and we appreciate that. Couple things coming up tomorrow. Speaking of parties in the park, Glow is having a party in the park out in Lucasville. You have not seen that facility. You might remember just last year, there was a huge community push with the Kubota Grant Cycle to get money to expand that park. We did a ribbon cutting, not even a month ago, specific to that Ampli Theater. They're having their first party in the park out there. Support Glow. It's local citizens that just want to do something that are focused on a project. In spite of government, in spite of feelings, they're just coming together to, to do good things for their community. We've been fortunate to be involved with, with the growth out there. Just wish them the best. Also, there's a, there's another group, great group in our community, the Autism Project. They're having their event on Saturday. They always have an autism walk. They do some auctions and different things to, to bring in funds and awareness to autism and services within our community. And they're, they're just a fantastic group. They do a lot of the challenger league sports as well. So if you have an opportunity, if you're looking for something to do, there's plenty to do in our community. Get out, get involved. That's all I have today. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I guess I'll second it.
Unless you want to say your own group, it'll take a second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Everybody have a great weekend.
Yes, please. Thank you.